...to order. We'll first have the invocation done by West Covina Police Officer Jeff Mosley and the Pledge of Legions by Councilman Steve Herford. Do you please rise?
Let us pray. God, we welcome your presence here tonight, and we thank you for the freedom we have together before you here tonight as a community to discuss important matters that will influence and shape the future of our city. We ask for your grace and divine blessing this evening as we discuss these matters. Lord, we pray that you will give our Mayor Mike Tuohy, Mayor Pro Tem Shelley Sanderson, and fellow City Council members Steve Herford, Rob Satello, and Frederick Sykes the wisdom to lead our city with integrity, humility, and compassion in accordance with your will. Give them strength and guidance as they work diligently to find solutions and address each of the difficult challenges at hand. Bless each and every person here tonight, draw us closer together as a community, and help us to set the example for other communities around us. Amen.
Thank you, Jeff.
Please join me in our pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll drop down to roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Tuohy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sanderson?
Here.
Councilmember Herford?
Here.
Councilmember Satello?
Here.
Councilmember Sykes?
Here.
Thank you. Report out of closed session, Mr. Arnold, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mike, Mayor.
That's fair.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, my apologies. The record should reflect that the City Council convened, let me first do, with a successor agency. The record should reflect that the successor agency convened this evening for the special meeting, with all members being present with the exception of the Chairman and Vice Chairperson. So that Board Member Herford, Satello, and Sykes were present on the successor agency matter. One item of anticipated litigation was discussed. There was no final action taken on that matter, and there is nothing further to report. That meeting was adjourned after closed session. On the special meeting of the City Council, that meeting was called to order by Councilmember Herford, with Councilmember Herford, Satello, and Sykes also being present on that matter concerning the items that were posted on the agenda, where those were all announced for discussion prior to recessing to closed session, the same way for the successor agency. Let me deal first with conference with real property negotiators. That matter was discussed, with only those three members being present. There was no final action taken, direction was provided with respect to the terms of sale, and there is nothing further to report. Moving on to conference with labor negotiators, the Mayor Pro Tem Sanderson joined the discussion on that item. She was in closed session on that item, and a presentation was made by the agency's negotiators, the city's negotiators. There was no final action taken on these matters, and there was nothing to report. That meeting was also adjourned after conclusion of closed session. It's appropriate to continue with the open portioning of the meeting at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Andy Pasmon, who, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's two items I have changes on. One is number seven to the agenda pertaining to Del Norte Park on the playground improvements. We're asking that that item be removed for tonight, and we'll bring it back at the next meeting. Also, there is an addendum to item number 20, the appointment of commissioners, and there is an addendum to that report that's before you in your diocese.
Thank you. We'll drop down to presentations. If I can have John Hughes, the Chairman of the West Covina Muscular Dystrophy Volunteer Committee, please come down. John?
And we were able to, we've already filmed the MDA telethon. It was filmed early, so it's not live. You have to use Memorex. We were very fortunate, and we were able to get very big numbers there, and we were able to do the check presentation, so it was pretty awesome. But filming that that day, John didn't make too many mistakes, so we did it all with one take. So, John, want to go ahead and tell us the good news you have on your numbers?
Okay, Mayor Tuohy, councilmembers, staff, members of the audience. As you know, this is our 22nd year for raising money for muscular dystrophy. This year, we had four events. The first event that we had was our fire department had filled a boot, where they raised $22,473. Then we had a dinner auction at the West Covina Elks. We had a golf tournament at South Hills Country Club, and we had an awesome Fourth of July event at Edgewood Middle School. We had a pancake breakfast, and with these events, we were able to raise a total of $90,450, which made our grand total $1.7 million. So also, our next event will be December the 2nd, where we'll have a Christmas party for about 50 children afflicted with this disease. We'll have Santa Claus gifts, and we always can use donations to help pay for some of the gifts. So I hope this Fourth of July was such an awesome event, that I hope we will continue having this Fourth of July event. So I urge the City Council to approve this again for next year, and we have a presentation that we want to make, and I have Annie Wondery from the Muscular Dystrophy Association to make the presentation to Mayor Tuohy.
We're trying to get the air conditioner going. We're saving money. It's killing me.
Well, thank you so much for having me tonight. Again, my name is Annie Wondery, and I'm a fundraising coordinator for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and we are so blessed to have the support from John Hughes from the city of West Covina, and Mayor Mike Tuohy, and the rest of the council members in your support this year. We have had wonderful events, and we're very blessed to have such a wonderful and supportive city to help in our fundraising efforts and our fight against muscular dystrophy. So, on behalf of the muscular dystrophy and the families that we serve, I have not only a plaque, but one of our kids with muscular dystrophy has made an art as a thank you for you guys in support for all that you do. And I also have an official plaque presenting to the city of West Covina in all of your efforts and support that you provide over the years.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sweating. I'd be 100 in here. I will Photoshop that outfit. I'm gonna take off 20 pounds. That'll be $20. Thank you very much.
I've got one thing here, and we have another presentation. Also, I wanted to add, as Mayor Tuohy said, him and I went to the KTLA studios last week, where we were taped with our presentation. It will be shown on Sunday night, September the 2nd, the day before Labor Day, from 7:00 PM to 11:00, and I hope you are all watching our presentation. We also were supposed to have a representative from the Greater West Covina Business Association, but taking the place, we have a representative from the ROP that we want to make a presentation, so if you could come down here. Greater West Covina Business Association handled all the food for our event, and they did an outstanding job. As you know, we must have had over 20,000 people, so we have a presentation to give to Greater West Covina Business Association.
So again, thank you so much to the Greater West Covina Business Association. They've been a huge supporter for us with this year and all of our events. Monica's just walking in. So through the support with John Hughes and the city of West Covina and the Greater West Covina, we're supporting Children's Hospital of Orange County, local research, and it goes to help support our summer camp that we are sending kids to. Our summer camp is actually currently going on. It's at the Irvine Ranch Outdoor Education Center, and we have over 70 kids that are attending this year. So the support that you guys are all providing helps provide hope for a cure and help for so many of our families. So thank you so much, Monica, and the Greater West Covina for all of your support this year.
Thank you very much. We hope to continue. The Fourth of July really did, it was a great event for all the people who participated, the vendors. They really loved it, and I think it's a great cause. So thank you, John, for the opportunity.
All right. Once again, thanks, Mike, and members of the council for all your support.
Thank you, John, and once again to the Elks Lodge, the Emblem Club, the West Covina MDA Committee, the Greater West Covina Business Association, and East Anglia Valley ROP. Tell Dr. Adler thank you very much for supplying the security guards for us. Thank you very much. Okay to look this way? Thank you.
All right. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we also would like to make an announcement. The city of West Covina is happy to announce that Jerry Curcio has been selected as this year's hometown hero by the Los Angeles County Fair. Jerry has been a volunteer with West Covina National Little League, where he has served as president of the league for the past several years. He was recently appointed the administrator of District 19. Jerry will be recognized during West Covina Day at the fair on Thursday, September 6th. Now we drop down to oral communications. Thank you for the extra paper towels, whoever delivered that. Chris?
Yes.
Yes, I agree. Bruce Lineback is our first speaker, and Carolyn Arntz is on deck. Bruce?
Good evening, council. First of all, I want to give a lot of acclaim and recognition to our Olympics. I want to recognize Gabby Douglas in particular. I'm from Iowa, and she got all her training in Iowa for the Olympics, all that nourishment, good education, and everything, so because of that great training, she wanted to go. So anybody who knows any gymnasts who wants to train for Olympics, send them to Iowa. First of all, I want to tell you about, I've been talking about this new internet, our new cable TV, or Internet TV, and I'm really unhappy about it. I guess that we authorized to spend $30,000 for PEG funds, and we're gonna get the Internet, it's gonna tell guys, tell, cast the council meetings and the planning commission meetings. Right now, we have one camera, and I found this very, couldn't follow the meetings, and find it kind of disconcerting, and here we are with one camera. When I did a little survey, I called around to other cities in the area, like Azusa, Glendora, Doherty, Monrovia, Walnut, Woodyear, El Monte, Covina, San Dimas, Diamond Bar, and all of them have more than one camera to televise the meetings. Now, basically, most of the fund from the equipment comes what you call the public educational grants, and we're using $30,000 of that to buy our equipment for our television, our Internet television production. Now, we have a total of 381K. Now, I talked to somebody at Covina, they said that they spent 60K for two cameras. And also, I checked the, read the staff report, and it said right here, I was talking about Single Hill, because they said they had such a great report, not report, production, it really looked great, I've seen it, it was a great production, and it says here, you did a research on it, and it says right here, based on the information, Single, this would be at about $8,400 monthly to televise meetings and have more cameras and stuff like that, $8,400 monthly. Now, I called down to Single Hill and I asked them about this, and he says, well, you've made a mistake. It's $8,400 yearly. Now, Single Hill is paying Charter Communications $690, which we acknowledge, that's about 7,000, 700 hours a month. And then he said, I got them on my cellphone if you want to listen, and then he said it's gonna cost another $50 an hour. So if you're televising, you have 20 meetings a year, four hours a meeting, which I think sounds, that's about 80 hours, multiply that times five, that means they're spending about $4,000 a year to have their meetings televised. So to have it televised besides the equipment, plus they're spending, with Charter, they're paying them $700. So basically, the big difference I noticed, West Covina is about the only one that has one camera, and all the ones have two camera. The basic cost, where we have big difference, differentiates, is the cost is cost of the cameraman. And the cost of a cameraman is basically, it's done three ways. You have volunteers. Secondly, you have volunteers. Secondly, you can hire cameramen for $50 an hour. And thirdly, you can basically have an employee work as part of his job, say 100, 200 hours a year when he has 2,000 years, hours, so you can use part, have him work part-time. I do really think that it's important that we, and also one thing, another thing that's bugged me, for four years, from 2008 to 2012, we were the only city that had no cable, there were no meetings televised, that over 100,000 in LA County or San Bernardino. Now here we are, we got this new program, and here we are, we've got $380 to spend. As far as I'm concerned, from a technical standpoint, and what I've seen, we're at the bottom, as far as comparing this to other cities. Here we are, we have the highest percentage of citizens who live in our city, who own homes, got a lot of pride of ownership, they deserve the best. And right now, I just feel, right now...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I've been here seated there five minutes.
Hey, okay, just one more second. I think they're being short-changed, and I think we should go out and investigate, have put out an agenda, bring the citizens in, and go out and fund a much better Internet program. Like I said before, we should have sent this one we have right now back and get something better.
Thank you, Bruce. Carolyn Arntz is next, and Blanca Venzer is on deck.
Good evening to each of you and to all of you. I come back because my effort is towards saving the hill. It has never varied from that. That's where I drew my land, my line in the sand, and it continues to be there. And yesterday, our brief was filed with the courts to continue the process of the court injunction. Even though we did not ever reach our 10,000 petition signers, it's very difficult to make 10,000 when you only have 5,000 that vote. But we did do a great job of educating a lot of people and making them aware that the hill as public land was being sold for a medical building. And so I just wanted to know that we are moving forward with our project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carolyn. Blanca Venzer and Forrest Wilkins is on deck. Blanca?
Good evening, Mayor Tuohy and councilmembers. My name is Blanca Venzer, and I've been here before. I'm here today to address the graffiti removal on our walls. I'm sure that you've, hopefully as public servants, I'm sure you've observed that it's just an eyesore. The walls are, the graffiti is being removed with paint that doesn't even match, not even nearly close to the wall. I mean, I saw one the other day that had like blue on there with a kind of a pinkish block wall. It's just unacceptable, especially the beautiful city that West Covina is. I mean, now even our sidewalks have graffiti, but my main concern is the main streets on, wherever you see graffiti, this graffiti removal, I don't know what company it is, it's doing an inferior job, and it's devaluing our property, and it is not making our city look good. I mean, I would hope and think that you see what I see, and it's not acceptable. So I'm here to complain about the job that's being done. If you haven't seen it, perhaps get in your cars, drive around, there's places that even actually look like a patchwork quilt. Maybe we should, maybe I'll take a picture of one of those walls so that you can see this, but I know as true public servants, as much as you love this city, you must be seeing what I see. So thank you very much. I hope that that gets remedied, because I will be back. Thanks.
Thank you, Blanca. Forrest Wilkins and Elsie Messman is on deck, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. To illustrate my point, may I share with you, first of all, I was on jury duty last week in Pomona. It involved an incident that happened in the Citrus Court Building. I was not seated on the jury, just because I was a policeman and the defense didn't like that. But anyway, during the process of going to the courtroom and so forth, you read a little brochure that the court hands out, and it emphasizes common sense. When the judge gives you instructions, he also emphasizes common sense, and I'm here to emphasize common sense. It's the Evergreen Contract. If we get rid of the Evergreen Contract, we will be in a position to have competitive bidding. Now, I've been talking about this Evergreen Contract for going on, actually, it's over nine months, and I don't have any response from the City Council. I did have a little conversation with Shelley Sanderson. At one point in time, we exchanged a little email. I thought she was gonna bring something up, make a motion so it could be voted on to direct city staff to do a study. Here again, we have Redondo Beach, that pays somewhere around $14 a month. Athens made a bid for the contract in Rosemead a few months ago, $16 and change. And what does West Covina pay? $26 and change. Are we subsidizing other cities? If we get rid of the Evergreen Contract, we'd be able to be in a position to be in competitive bidding. You know, when I first brought this up, we had the Vice President from Athens come and tried to say that I didn't know what I was talking about and so forth. He was trying to defend his company. And what I brought up was that hit piece that was on Fred. Well, I have a 460 form in front of me that is a summary of expenditures for supporting and opposing others in council races. Now, the hit piece was on Fred. They list a contribution to Fred Sykes for $867.45. Now, is that common sense that they put a hit piece on Fred and they're listing an expense for him? And then, of course, we go to the next page, and there is $867.45 given to Karen Armburst and the same amount of money to Steve Herford. Now, Steve and Karen publicly stated that they had nothing to do with that. But you know, it doesn't make too much common sense to me that we have a relationship with Athens, the City Council members have a relation with Athens, and something like that comes out. I even suggested that Athens make an apology, but we still don't have it. But getting back to my main point, if we were in the position to have competitive bidding, we would not be paying $26 and change for our trash. Again, Athens made a bid for $16 and change in Rosemead. What does that tell you? Common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. We have Elsie Messman and Shirley Buchanan on deck.
Mayor Tuohy, council, staff, and everyone here tonight. My name is Elsie Messman, and I've been a resident of West Covina for 40 years. I'm here today to speak on Article 13 and a few other topics. Regarding the printing of Discover West Covina, what information do you put in there that benefits us? It's a waste of money and personnel. We did without it for all these years, and we got along just fine. Tell the people the truth and put it on the web, on your website. I don't think we will be doing much more redevelopment in the near future, so bring back our Chamber of Commerce to welcome all the new businesses. The money you save, use it for something useful for the residents, not just for for political candidates. Well, Mayor Tuohy, you got, you got all you could from West Covina. Now you must move on. Maybe the meetings will be shorter. I hope you don't destroy the water board like you've done to West Covina. This city is run by developers, which are your clients and Athens. The residents of West Covina have to stand up and be accounted for. Is this city better off now than when you first took office? I don't think so. Our reserves are down from 50 million to about five. You are leaving us a debt that borderline on bankruptcy. The golden goose is dead. I know Athens builds us for three months at a time, and they save, saves them a lot of money, and they're never short to help our leaders out so they can help, so they can keep their contract. I don't like paying two months in advance, so I pay one month at a time. You all can do it, just make sure you pay it on time the following month. It also saddens me that all the people are not treated equally. Al Hassan was put through pure hell for not paying, but TeleQ got an $8.6 million city loan, and listen to this article from 2009. In May, Pacific Development bought the property for $3.5 million. The company will receive $8.6 million a city loan, which doesn't have to be paid if the developer continues to provide low-income housing for the next 99 years. Is anybody here tonight that can check on this in 99 years to make sure he's upholding his part? Slick move, council. The same thing was done in Montebello by the same attorney and his friend. This was a non-solicited bid. Councilman Sanderson, the only thing you know is calling residents liars. Did the residents delete the reserve of 50 million to almost nothing? Did the residents sit on the board of the redevelopment and make decisions to put this city in serious debt? Councilmen Sandersons, when you point your finger at us, you're also pointing three at yourself. I guess we can't expect miracles from someone who doesn't really have an education. Councilman Herford said that he supported the sales of Charles Company because the city would receive money to the tune of $5.3 million. This was in 2006, and that lot has not been developed yet. Why? It's Tuohy's client, that's why. So I think, and I have proof here to prove that what I'm saying is right, Councilwoman Sanderson. And also, the ex-blockbuster video building at the corner of Azusa and Amar is a disgrace. If you had a building in your corner, you would look the other way. But now it's time to bring in experienced and educated leaders that could care about the city, not just yes people. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsie. Shirley Buchanan and Vicki Shalaga is on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Tuohy, Mayor Pro Tem Sanderson, and councilmembers. My presentation is about the 381,000 still in the PEG fund, or whatever name it is earmarked in the current budget. In 2010, per a communication from Chris Freeland, there was a balance of $421,178 in the PEG fund. I assume the difference as of today comes as a result of the purchase of one new camera and other costs related to the streaming that began in mid-2012. It has been my understanding, from the time that cable was eliminated, that the PEG funds are restricted to be spent only on capital slash equipment, and that no funds can be used for personnel. At the time of suspending the... At the time of suspending the cable viewing of the council meetings, I believe part of the rationale Councilwoman Toohey used for eliminating the cable viewing was that only 30,000 residents subscribed to Charter Cable, and the cost versus cable viewers did not warrant the continuation of the city's cost for the personnel due to the seven-plus deficit, seven-million deficit the city was experiencing at the time. There was some discussion that the PEG funds might be returned to Charter, but that didn't happen because they decided the city would need the funds in the event they were able to resume cable viewing. It was my opinion then, and continues to be now, that no matter that the number of subscribers was only 30,000, we paid the subscriber fees in our monthly bills and should have been entitled to receive the service. Several options were presented at the time for people to man the equipment at no cost to the city. With that said, and the comments of previous speaker, a previous speaker, that there are PEG funds for additional cameras, let's at least give the residents back the opportunity to watch their city business in action with better-quality streaming, and experienced volunteers can make, can man that equipment. And I appreciate the opportunity to express my views tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky Shalaga and Dora Guzman on deck.
Thank you, Mayor Toohey and Council. I would like to give a vote of thanks to a couple of people, well, all of you, really. Two weeks ago, we had National Night Out. You were nice enough to go dark and support our Police Department and our Fire Department, and that goes a long way. Council members, Rod Satello was there at my event, Fred Sykes was there, although a little later, so he got cold chilly. Andy Pasment was there. I had about 40 to 50 neighbors that came to my event. But I think the two people I need to thank the most were the people that stepped up for me. I was not going to be able to do this event this year because of unforeseen circumstances. And two people in the community came to my door and told me they would do the National Night Out at my house for me. I want to thank ex-councilwoman Sheri Lane and Mayor Toohey for, they are the ones that paid for everything out of their own pockets and allowed me to have an event that was very well-attended. Everybody had a great time. We had three platters this big of homemade cookies by Mayor Toohey, who baked all day by himself. His kids didn't help him.
Hopefully, we're not on cable right now or webbing.
He had a bakery, I guess, so he knows how to cook, and they were delicious. They were a big hit. I brought the platters back. Of course, they're empty. But I ate too many. It was great, and I can't say enough about these two individuals for stepping up at a very low time in my life. Just thank you all who attended, and thank you, George, for doing such a good article. And we had a lot of dignitaries there. Grace Napolodano was there. We had somebody from Roger Hernandez's office attended. We had the chief of police. Frank Wills was there with a load of his department. And Chief Sagala was there with a load of his people, and just made it a really good event. So thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, Vicky. Dora Guzman and Lloyd Johnson is on deck.
It's Gomez.
Go, I'm sorry.
You did that the last time I was here, too, and I said, as long as you don't call me late for dinner, it's okay.
I would never call anyone late for dinner.
It's, I'll take any name. Mayor, council members, my name's Dora Gomez. I'm here on behalf of Covina Assembly of God located at 250 East San Bernardino Road, and this is regarding our event, the Back to School Blast, which was held Friday, August the 3rd, at the Covina Park. And I want to thank Councilmember Fred Sykes for being there and representing West Covina. And some of the stats that I have on that event is that this is our 11th year doing the event. We had an estimated number of people attend was of over 2,000. We took over Covina Park. 1,300 backpacks were passed out with all the school supplies needed from kindergarten to 12th grade, and we still passed out an additional 100 bags of school supplies. We ran out of backpacks, but we still bagged school supplies. We had food partners there, which was Frito-Lay, Pepsi, Taco Bell, and everybody that registered got a free meal and a beverage. Free haircuts for kids and anyone else that wanted them. We had dental units, also medical units and vision units, all doing free exams. We had a section for them. The total number of families that attended this event were 531, and according to the stats that we had, 263 were from single-family parent. And the reason why we invited you, Mayor, and apparently you weren't able to make it, but also Councilwoman Sykes, was because of the number of families that we get from West Covina. This year, we had 533 family units. 10% of those families were from West Covina. And some of the dignitaries, along with Councilwoman Sykes that was there, was Senator Ed Hernandez, Assemblyman Roger Hernandez, David Vella from Gloria Molina's office, Supervisor Molina, Mayor of Azusa Joe Rocha, Kevin Stapleton, Mayor of Covina, and Walt Allen, Mayor Pro-Ten, John King, Councilmember Covina, Darrell Parrish, which was the city manager. And again, I want to thank you for the support. We are getting more and more, this is our 11th year, and it gets bigger every year, but we're going and thanking the cities that have supported us and helped us, and with your presence, and thanks again, Councilwoman Sykes, for being there. I hope you enjoyed yourself. It was organized chaos, I guess was the best way we could describe it, having that many people. And it wasn't just getting their backpacks and leaving, they had face painting. We had, of course, music going on in the band shell and along with all the food. I'm trying to think of all the different things. We had the skating rink, that's where the haircuts were being done. So we are gearing up for our Christmas event, and hopefully, Mayor, you'll be able to attend that this year, so you can see where a lot of the families are. At that event, we also not just give out gifts, but also turkeys, hams, food baskets, breakfasts, which is pancakes, which is supplied by IHOP, and sausage, eggs, and all the good stuff. But again, thank you, and thank you again, Councilwoman Sykes.
And Dora, I just want to tell you, sorry, from my standpoint, my wife was in the hospital for two weeks, and she was this in her third day out of the hospital, and I was caring for her. So I'm very sorry I could not attend your event. I normally make all the events, even in our neighboring cities. Very sorry.
Well, thank you for thinking of us, but I am, again, I put an open invitation for our next event. Thank you.
I was there in Covina last Saturday. They had a Dare to Care Hair Event. Obviously, I can't contribute much hair, so the stylists groomed down my goatee for the Covina Valley Hospice. But I try to go to all those different events, and I wasn't able to make, they had the...
That was put on by Council...
Walt Allen, in memory of his wife. Absolutely. Pat was a good friend of ours. Lloyd Johnson and Ray Hernandez is on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Toohey and council members. Well, first of all, what I would like to know, why with all the money we have in our PEG Fund, why we can't upgrade our equipment so we can have a decent coverage of our city council meetings? I am sure with all the new technology today, multi-cameras can be run by one volunteer. Next thing I would like to say is about our planning commission. What can I say about our planning commission? Nothing good. If it wasn't for Dave Stewart, who this council wanted to replace, and Don Holt, it would be a complete disaster. Mayor Toohey said anyone could be a planning commissioner. Boy, were you wrong. You have a couple of planning commissioners who doesn't even have a clue what's going on at the planning commissioners. You have one planning commissioner who doesn't even know the beginning of the Pledge of Allegiance, and that is sad. You have three new planning commissioners that already committed a Brown Act violation. And I'm here to let this council know, I did report it to the district attorney. So this is something, I think it's time, maybe it's way over time. It's time for this city to have term limits on our council members. I do believe we need term limits, three, four-year term limits, I think should be quite efficient for our councils. And I also would like to see a $30,000 cap put on each election. We need an open playing field. It's time that we stop paying for the council. I mean, when you spend, like Karen Armbrust spent almost $80,000 for a council that she didn't even win, this is ridiculous. Would I like to see this council, have this city start looking at how we can put this on the ballot to let the residents vote on it? See if they want a goal with term limits and a cap on it. It's something I think is way overdue, and I should like to see it implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Ray Hernandez and Herb Redholz is our last speaker. Ray?
Give me a second here so I can set my props up. Good evening, members of the council. I have before you here the image of the city website, and this is the thumbnail shot, and this is the full screen. I ask you, what's wrong with this picture? I'll answer that for you. You can't see it. You can't see your names. You can't see your faces. What good is this? I have logged on to over 50 websites in a 50-mile radius of West Covina. And with that said, I listed about 12 local cities and pointed out the features that they offered to their residents. You have copies of this, incidentally, and let me just go over a few with you. Diamond Bar displays the consent calendar on the PowerPoint at each meeting. Awesome. Great communication. Transparent. Whittier uses the sire system that we have contracted with, and their picture, perfect. Why don't we have that? Gardena is using pop-up ads in their websites, creative in-the-box marketing, using Upstream System, a company with no charge to them. We're paying $11,800 for just the production without the planning commission. What is consistent of these city web streamings, all use multiple cameras, enable them to broadcast separate speakers, separate council members, separate individuals, and PowerPoint presentations for the viewer. All cities include dropdown menus listing all meeting subject items, allowing you to go directly to any subject without having to view entire broadcast meeting. This is what we got. Of over 50 cities surveyed, West Covina video streaming was at the bottom of the list in terms of clarity, broadcast production, viewer information. Staff reports state, the main issue here is one camera being used, wide angle to see all council members. I agree. Staff reports state, the system at the city of Signal Hill is very different and much more expensive. I agree. Staff reports, a city does not have funding to provide personnel to operate the video system. I disagree. Facts are, West Covina and its charter PEG funds has a balance of $381,845. That's a lot of money. And I know that this is for equipment dedication, it's not for labor. Why can't we afford, we can't afford the state-of-art equipment with this type of money. We have the highest PEG funds in any city in the San Gabriel Valley. Why is this council not effectively using these dollars, these funds? Allow me to address the multi-camera operation cost. Why can't we not think out of the box? I suggested internship programs, I suggested volunteer programs, I suggested using staff to manage programs. The West Covina Police Department has volunteer programs in place. Why not a broadcast volunteer program for residents? Tonight, I am suggesting using advertising pop-up ads in the city website. The city of Gardena uses this method to offset their cost. The city of West Covina is getting no charge web streaming. The company called Upstream Systems is allowed pop-up ads in which the viewer can delete if they don't want to see it and go directly to the meeting. Sire System, which West Covina has contacted with, this city web streaming, cost estimated $11,800, February 7, 2012, city agenda item number two. That was not what was elected or selected. I would suggest in eliminating the planning commission broadcast with council, approved February 7th on agenda item number four. I'd rather see one quality broadcast meeting than two fog productions. With today's technology advances in broadcasting, one operator from one computer program can manage three cameras with one touch of a finger. In closing, Mayor Toohey, I encourage you and other members...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, the speaker's been there five minutes.
I'm ending here.
Thank you, Ray.
I'm ending. I encourage you and members of the council, make the right motion, please place this item on the agenda. Again, redirect staff to take a revised view of this item and come up with solutions to make this a reality. Other cities have the same financial burdens that West Covina is experiencing, yet they can offer a quality web broadcast for their residents. There's no reason West Covina cannot offer the same, considering we have all this PEG dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Redholz is our last speaker.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to all of you and to all the residents here. First off, I want to thank Bruce Leinbach and Ray Hernandez for the tremendous amount of time and effort they spent in bringing this information to you and to us. These two guys really care, and I am up here to totally support what they have presented to you tonight. West Covina is a premier city. We should be offering our residents top-notch, premier delivery of information to them. There's no reason for this city to take a backseat to anybody. Other smaller cities, lesser population, there's no reason for West Covina to be offering second-rate delivery of information, and that's what it's all about, is delivering information to the city, to the residents. This was even an issue back in the last city council campaign at this, in this forum, when we had the candidates' forum, the question of transparency came up, and it simply was the fact that there is not enough transparency. And with so much interest and concern about other cities, staff, elected officials, it's in the best interest of this city to be as transparent as possible, and I think we owe our residents nothing but the best, and nothing less than that. Secondly... Secondly, I want to express my support for the city in continuing to maintain the Brown Act. The state, as is their habit lately, to circumvent laws and circumvent their own laws and continue to pick our pocket, I commend the city for staying with the Brown Act and not deviating from it, even at the expense of losing the state's contribution to us. Number three, I read in the paper today where there is apparently going to be some improvement in the car lots, the dealerships over there that are owned by Mr. Alhassen. And I certainly would like to see that come to pass, where there once again would be vehicles on those lots, and the city would be reaping sales tax benefits by an increase in sales of cars over there. The fourth is, item number 20, is an appointment that is in front of you tonight for the community service senior commission. I am one of four individuals that apply for that. I certainly would appreciate your consideration. I think you all know, I have almost 10 years of commission experience with the city on the planning and Human Resources Commission. I have historical reference that is quite extensive for this city. I have lost, have not lost my desire at all to serve the city and its residents, and will do so in whatever manner I can, and would appreciate your consideration for that appointment. With that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is our last speaker, and we can address some of the issues just briefly. One, Elsie Messman brought up the affordable housing, and I'm not sure if everyone understands how affordable housing works. You build a unit, and it's worth $1,000 a month rent. You rent it for 700 a month because of the city subsidy, so we're subsidizing 300 a month of those people's rents. It's similar to Section 8. It's no different, but Section 8 has prepaid or pays the rent on behalf of those tenants. I know you may not understand Section 8. Section 8, 75% or 80% of the rent is paid by the county or by the government, and the tenant pays 20%. In our affordable housing projects, it's slightly different, where the actual renter is paying 75%, and the city is paying approximately 25%, which what Elsie is saying, just so people understand, and you can say it however you want to say it. If you build an apartment that's worth $1,000 a month, and you're losing 300 a month on 80 units, it's a $24,000 a month loss, or $288,000 a year annual loss. The way our affordable projects work is we write off the loan for 99 years if you keep it affordable. At any point in time, you don't keep it affordable, you owe the balance of the money. The money is due and payable then. The moment it's no longer an affordable project, the city would get their money back. I want to make sure it's quite different. If you don't support the senior affordable housing, then say that, but that's how it's done. Covina has a project going that you just read about in the paper. I believe on Roland Behind, what is Enterprise Rent-A-Car, I believe they received around $255,000 upfront per unit in assistance. Ours are more in the 60,000 to 70,000 range, if I can remember the exact amount of money. But that is how affordable housing works, whether you support it or don't support it, it's kind of universal. Then they have 202 projects where you only, and Ballin Park has one, you only pay 30% of your income, period. So if you make $200 a month, you owe $60, period. Because 100% of that unit to be built was paid for by the government. And they're basically just getting the money to manage the unit. Those are the facts. And again, I understand what you're saying, but that is how those projects are going, and that's, we have five affordable housing projects, they're all, you know, slightly different, but they're all similar to what's been done here. On the PEG access, I need to clarify, because what we have is approximately 35,000 total units in our city. Of that, approximately 10,000 are charter. So 25,000 dwellings do not use charter, and may not be eligible or can get the cable broadcasts that you're referring to. So if it's being subsidized by the general taxpayer, anyone who may have Verizon, UNet, Dish, DirecTV, and I don't know, there's many other things, you can't get that broadcast, but your tax dollars are subsidizing it. So it is a fundamental question, and I respect, you know, the difference. But I did say, the number of units they have, and their membership or whatever, subscribership is going down. It's almost under 10,000 total city units that have cable connections, because in some areas, we can't get cable. Some commercial dwellings are not eligible or cannot get cable. Like at my old business, The Dairy, they don't have a cable line going there. You can never get it, no matter what you're, unless you pay for a private line to be dropped, which is around $10,000 or $20,000 from charter. You have to use DishNet or DirecTV, someone like that, that uses satellite capabilities to get your service. The PEG funds can only be used for equipment, it cannot be used for personnel. You mentioned Whittier, I'm going to check with Whittier. Whittier happens to be managed, and they have a paid staff member, at least one. John Garside, he lives in West Covina. He is the producer of Marty Shields, Marty's Corner, the TV show, which is on a number of stations, but he lives in the Larkell and Valinda area, or Larkell and Amar area. But John does live in our city, and I will check with John Garside how they do it. There were some other subsidies that other cities do do, like from what we checked, Signal Hill. And I think if we can show that. When you guys mentioned transparency, and it's amazing, everyone who spoke tonight, only Herb brought up that the state, this took another $21,000 for us for being transparent. We don't have, we don't have to legally post our agendas ahead of time anymore, because they don't want to reimburse us the money. Yet, some of those same assembly members who voted for that, to take away transparency, beats us up on other issues about transparency. We got reimbursed $21,000 a year to post our notices as required by state law. Since they're hurting for money, they said, "Forget that portion, and don't notify the public ahead of time." We're still going to do it, and notice the meetings as we're supposed to, but we lose another $21,000. I know it's okay, it's just another $21,000 deficit, and some of you in the audience will say, "It's this council's fault, that we mismanaged, and that's why we owe another $21,000 in debt," when it's actually the state legislature stealing money once again and saying transparency. Just don't speak, John, out loud like that, that's inappropriate. And whether or not, what you'll do it for? The state's not reimbursing it anyway. And we also found out, John, I'm asking you not to speak out. Okay? It's a matter of decorum. People don't do it at your daughter's school board meeting, you should show respect here. Adam, thank you, John. Other groups, other county offices, we're getting $200,000 and $300,000 reimbursed, and we're getting 21. So I don't know if you've seen that article in the LA Times, how different everyone gets reimbursed. It is a shocking scale. One city charges $10,000 per meeting for public notification. So that is some of it. If we can have city staff address the cable issue, because I know you did those staff reports. Chris?
Certainly, I think the comments that the mayor has already made, specifically with the use of the PEG funds, is completely accurate. I know the members of the public expressed that as well. With regards to the cost for personnel, again, there is a cost to have a staff member operating the cameras. And it's not just the time for the meetings, it's also setting up for the meetings and whatnot. And so there is a personnel cost. I know Mr. Leinbach said that the numbers that we said were incorrect. Actually, those are correct. It's 690 per month multiplied by 12. That number just happens to be close to the $8,400 it talks about per year, but that does not include the cost of the personnel at Signal Hill, which is a full-time position, which would be here. So the cost that we estimated, based on the cost of our previous staff member that was here, it would be approximately $8,400, $82 to $8,400 per month to have a full-time staff member to operate both planning commissions, as well as city council meetings and other events here in the community. So those are the costs are at this time.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sanderson.
Thank you, Mayor Tuohy. I just wanted to also touch briefly on a few items that were brought up tonight. One was in reference to graffiti complaint. I don't know if staff can get with the resident and get those addresses, and see if maybe we can take a look at those areas. I know that this council wants to make sure we don't have the patchiness going on, and I don't think any of us like to hear that. So I want to see if there's something, maybe we can meet with the resident and get those locations. Secondly, there was in reference to Speaker Tu, the Athens, Mr. Wilkins, I had contacted you to meet with me so we can go over some options and how I can help you, and you did decline that meeting. If you're still welcome to meet with me, I would love to meet with you. I truly believe it's very important to not only hear the residents, but to meet with them and to communicate, and so that we can have a better community together, so, because sometimes there's misunderstandings. And so I'm all, my door is open, and if anybody would ever like to meet with me, please, you know, I have my number at City Hall. Also, in reference to, there was a comment made in reference to an auto dealer, and comparison to a housing project. The housing project is restricted funds. It's for seniors and to keep their rents low. It's a great, amazing project. Very, very happy that we did it in West Covina, so much so, we did a second at a project, and at that time, many residents were greatly in support of that. It wasn't for running a business, it's for helping seniors and making sure they have somewhere to live in our community. That's very important to us. And lastly, I wanted to touch base on the camera, and do have a question as to if we're using the same system. I understand about hiring somebody, I don't think that may be the issue. It just seems to me with the residents, what they've brought forward is why our camera isn't clear. I don't know if there's a way that we can check into that, maybe it just needs some adjustment, or possibly finding out if there's a way that we can take some of the PEG monies that we do have and invest in a, you know, more, you know, accurate camera. I know they have that for housing, you know, when you have your security systems, they'll have, you can buy the infrared, you know, how you have all the different options, so maybe we can look into that as well. And so that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member sayes?
Thank you, Mayor Tuohy. First of all, in June 2008, regarding the live broadcast, it was, from my perspective, it was a sad day. And it's a horse that I beat, and I beat it almost to death. So all I can say is, these gentlemen who brought forth this information, it just shows that we can do better. There's no doubt about it. We just have to get the desire and do the research and get it done. As far as Mr. Lloyd Johnson, he brought us some issues, and I hope everyone that's in West Covina takes heed to what I'm about to say. Term limits, it makes adjustments. Districts, it makes adjustments. But the best adjustment is the attitude of our community. We have a lot of folks that are not paying attention. And as critical as these times are, this place should be packed, because we have some serious things that we have to take care of in order for our city to survive. So the best adjustment, and it was mentioned earlier, when you have 5,000 people that vote out of 112,000 people, that's pretty sad. So I don't think I need to say any more on that. Just wake up West Covina and get involved, and I mean actively involved. Now, finally, back in 2007, there was an issue with this contract, it was brought before this council, or should I say before the day, it's because the council has changed in its constitution, but the majority is still the same. And I said that the residents were underserved and underrepresented. Athens contract is a stark example of what I said then, and you can see it today, that the residents are being underrepresented when it comes to our contract negotiations. Something is wrong when other cities can pay half, even less than half, of what it costs us for our trash service. Not only that, when you have no competitive bidding, that means you have no control of the price, the price is whatever the company wants to charge. And most egregiously, the thing that we have is, we have a contract that's here forever and beyond. The way it's set up is here forever and beyond. We won't be able, unless some changes are brought, we will not be able, in our lifetimes, to see a competitive bid on our contract service. So with that, I have meant said, Mayor, can we get someone to explain for my staff the Evergreen clause and what it means in regards to the trash contract? Thank you.
I think we can explain that under your agenda item, if you'd like.
That's just one item, and I don't know if these folks are going to be able to stay that long.
I have no problem. Go ahead, Councilmember Protem.
Point of order. I don't believe, I don't know if the staff is prepared to go over the Evergreen contract. I'm just referring this to the city manager for some clarification on that, because I know they'd be more than willing to explain. However, we don't have an agendized item, as well as the staff may not have the information to be prepared to present that report.
I just want to make sure that we don't have a Brown Act violation, and then have everyone reported here. You can only do so much items on, so much talking on an item not on the agenda by law. And I know you're a law and order person. So go ahead, Councilmember Sykes.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, can you give us some clarification so that these folks can immediately understand the Evergreen clause? Just that portion is what I'm asking to be explained, that Evergreen clause, what it means in the contract. If not, I guess they can wait until the item comes up. Thank you.
I have no problem if you feel comfortable and can do it legally without putting us in jeopardy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, well, I do not have the Athens agreement in front of me, but I can, I can explain globally what an Evergreen is, without addressing the specifics, because I don't recall what the specific term of the Evergreen. But basically, an Evergreen is that your contract of service continues for a period of time, and each year on the anniversary date of that contract, the contract is extended one additional year. So for example, if you have a three-year Evergreen, you have a three-year contract that on the first anniversary after the first year, you then have a, an additional year, so then you'd have basically what is amounting to a four-year contract. The legislative body, the city council, has the right under that contract to provide notice at any point in time, or if it's defined by the contract, at whatever point in time it is on an annual basis, to notify the vendor that the Evergreen is to, or the termination of that Evergreen is to kick in, and therefore, whatever is left on the number of years would then be the conclusion of the contract. So you, you basically would have, in that situation, a user, the example that I used, you would have a three-year contract ongoing. Many cities use that for continuity of service, also for, especially in the waste hauling industry, you tend to see longer terms- of service, also for, especially in the waste hauling industry, you tend to see longer terms, term contracts because of the investment of waste haulers into trucks, facilities, compliance with AB 939 regulations and things like that. But basically, that's the purpose of, or that's the rough definition of an Evergreen.
Councilmember Sykes.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So to make it in plain English, the Evergreen means automatic renewal.
Well, it, yes and no. It would be automatically renewed unless there's action to terminate. So you don't lose that right to terminate. The city council has never lost the right to terminate, whether it be the Athens contract or any other contract that, that has an Evergreen or doesn't have an Evergreen. So while if the council does not enforce the termination provision consistent with the terms of that contract, then the answer is yes, it does roll over for an additional one year. If the council does take that action, then the number of years that are remaining on the Evergreen would be the term of that contract. I hope that helped, and I try to do it in my best English as possible.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't at the last meeting. I got held over, had a canceled flight and couldn't make it back. But this is my first opportunity to thank everybody that kept me in office and defeated the recall. I appreciate the support. This is two elections within a year. I think it sends a pretty loud and clear message to the council that they're doing the right thing. I would say that a lot of the people that speak every meeting are not my supporters. I think they know that. I know that, too. But we have a great city, and this council, while I was away, approved a balanced budget, which was no easy task, and our staff did a great job, I think, of putting the numbers together to make sure that we continue. And there goes Mrs. Vinsor every time I speak. She leaves, which is fine. I listen to her, but that's okay. But I did want to say while she was here that our graffiti program here in the city of West Covina is one of the best graffiti abatement programs in the state of California. I think the chief of police could verify that if we asked him to, but we get very few complaints. Mr. Sykes calls daily, and I think the graffiti is cleaned up within 24 hours. So I have no problem if you, you have complaints that you call the city manager's office, and they'll put you in touch with the graffiti people to clean it up. And I appreciate that you come up here and say stuff sometimes and then just walk away without hearing a response. So I also would like to say that the Evergreen contract, the reason why we do an Evergreen contract is a lot to do with the service and the rates, and Covina has an Evergreen contract. Just about every city around has Evergreen contracts. So it's not something unusual. That's the way government does business sometimes. In the last five years, I can honestly say I've had maybe one or two complaints about Athens, and I think that's a pretty good indication that the people in the city of West Covina are happy with their trash pickup program. With regards to the TV broadcast, I have no problem moving the camera closer or looking into sire. I think we talked about that last time. And improving the quality of our broadcast over the internet, I think the last election, we talked about doing the internet service, and all the candidates said yes. We brought it forward. If the quality is not the same as it is in Whittier somewhere, maybe we can find out why, but I have no problem with adjusting things. I think it's kind of a process we have to go through. And finally, I want to say to a lot of the people that were here tonight that supported our assemblyman, Mr. Hernandez, how ironic is it that some of the things that we said when he was here in West Covina are now coming home to roost? The hit piece against Councilmember Tui, Councilwoman Lane, and Councilwoman Sanderson, the money laundering of $100,000 questionable. Now he faces a DUI, refuses to obey a police officer who wants to withdraw blood from his arm. That's the guy you supported. So when you come up here and you attack me, just remember who you supported, because that's the guy you wanted sitting up here representing you. So all of you that are my opponents, that's great. You can come up here and say whatever you want, but I look right back at you and I say, you're, you supported the assemblyman who may go to jail. So think about that for a while. And I just want to say on the recall, Mrs. Arndt, you know, I respect you. You're, you know, you're quite a campaigner. You were out there doing a lot of work, and all your supporters were, too. But it's over. And I know you're not going to think it's over. You're going to continue to come up here and, and fight this lawsuit, which is going to cost the city and the residents money. And you're going to continue to be our political opponents, which is fine. That's the American way. That's what democracy is all about. But West Covina is a great city, and do not ever, do not ever criticize our city. We all are up here doing the best job we can. You used to come up here and say five words that were just horrible words. The people of West Covina did not support that agenda. So what I would suggest is that we agree to disagree, and we move forward and make West Covina a better place to live.
And to finish up on that type of note, just to tell everyone, I'm always shocked sitting up here that we hear stuff about us each and every meeting, and not one person out in that audience has ever questioned or raised the stuff at this podium about what our assembly member has done or accused when the domestic violence called to his house, where he accused me and the police department. It's the same thing that went on with the DUI, that the officer was at fault. And I'm saying, not one of these people said anything that that was bad, but you come up here and say stuff about this council, and I can tell you, I don't have a DUI charge ever. Yet you talk about me, one of the ladies leaving, always references me, but never Roger, who she supported. And Roger has a right to the trial. Just like I've always had rights also, and I've never even was accused, but I still have been found guilty by a number of you for doing nothing. And some of you are mothers of law enforcement officers, and to me, to have to have a law enforcement officer threaten to take Roger Hernandez, Assemblyman Hernandez, to the ground to draw blood. He's a sitting assembly member, driving the taxpayer's car outside of the jurisdiction that he was allowed to have it in, and not one person said nothing. I raised up this whole thing on the hit piece against me to Forrest Wilkins at the podium before, and he clarified why he thought it was different, never saying that that thing was wrong. Okay? And there's more people in that. If you read the campaign forums, which you always talk about ours, it says that there's two, one council member and one candidate, and Concerned Citizens for a Better West Covina owed money to someone. They did not know at first who it was. I don't know how you get campaign majors printed, mailed for you, and it says, who do you owe money to? And it says, unknown. That, to me, is questionable and scary, and not one person has raised up that point of clarification. Forrest, you keep on bringing up what you say Athens reported. There's possibly 100, 200,000 dollars out there that no one reported, and you have sat silent on that. Just because they didn't have a gun in it, it's okay to deceive the public of 100,000 to 200,000 dollars in expenditures for campaign stuff. And again, Paul Mitchell, who happens to be Roger's campaign consultant, did the work. Then a loan, which, by the way, I just want to make sure our council member and Colleen Rosati, who were recipients of it, you're not allowed to get loans from private individuals unless they're in the loan business, or there has to be a loan instrument. And if you read Karen Armbis forums, whether you agree with her or disagree with her, she has a name listed and an interest rate. That's required by state law. The loans you see on our council members forum, sitting to my left, and I better clarify because Shelley will hit me, Fred Sykes and Colleen Rosati do not list a loan instrument and the name. It just says unknown. Now, they have popped in the name Fred Register, and it says that Fred Register apparently bought the loan from Assemblyman Roger Hernandez's campaign consultant. That's some of the issues. You have to look at the 2009 campaign paperwork, which Fred and his wife already paid the record fine in the city of West Covina for the paperwork that was messed up there already, the Concerned Citizens for a Better West Covina. I believe they paid approximately $10,000 to $15,000 fine for the paperwork that was already screwed up. And that is some of the issues going on. There's many more issues out there concerning Assemblyman Roger Hernandez, but those are his issues. I'm just saying, you guys come up here every meeting and speak about us. When he sat up here, he's our sitting assembly member, no one has said nothing. Okay? In my eyes, I tell my kids, if you ever get pulled over, you do what the officer tells you to do. Okay? Our assembly member is teaching our kids that you do whatever's in your best interests and don't obey. He failed three sobriety tests, field sobriety test. He did not do a breathalyzer, and he wasn't going to submit to the blood test, which, again, those are automatic suspensions of your driver's license. I'm telling you, no one's going to suspend the state's assembly member's driver's license because they will have their budgets cut. I already know how this thing works. Okay? But it's sad what has gone on, what has been allowed. And Fred Sykes himself quoted in the newspaper, Roger Hernandez went from lawmaker to lawbreaker. That was the guy who helped him out and got him elected. Councilmember Sykes.
You know, I, I apologize to the public that this is our business here. This should be for the city. And we're doing some dirty campaigning. I apologize. And what I do suggest you do, and again, I'll repeat what I said earlier, get actively involved. I ran three times, and I guarantee you, you can go to the clerk's office and get the 460 forms, and you'll see where my money went, my savings, because I was fighting for my community, and I was committed. And you can check in the clerk's office, and you'll see that every campaign that I ran, I paid the bill, and sometimes I had some help. And this third campaign was done with $13,000. You can check. And all I can say is, the reason why we have this nasty, dirty stuff, we have the government. We deserve, folks. And again, I apologize. We need to get involved. There are some changes that need to be made. This, this, this meeting should not stoop to this level. And I, I apologize. Thank you.
Fred, you can apologize all you want. You started this many years ago at this level, and with all due respect, the FPPC and the district attorney is the one who's doing the case, not this city or this city council. And it mentioned you and Colleen Rosati. That may have been benefit of the money laundering. Read the article. The FPPC, which is state agency, and the Los Angeles County District Attorney. I know a lot of your friends always say they are puppets of ours, but they are not. The paper said it quite clear, and you can read the FPPC website and the district attorney's website.
Mr. Mayor, may I bring the council back to business of the evening?
With all due respect, Arnold, when we have our integrity attacked, and I know a lot of the people that clap are the people that come up and attack us, they never really want true answers, and you can smile, Forrest. I'm just saying, it's a matter of, you know, and I know a lot about your beliefs, and I truly believe you're a very good person. But equity and fairness should be fair. I understand, Arnold. Thank you. I've heard from you. We'll drop down to consent calendar. Any members wishing an item to be moved off consent?
Mr. Mayor, I want to pull item 13, please.
Okay, minus item 13.
And I want to, is item 14 only informational? Okay, the 13 is fine.
I just want to make a comment.
No problem. Hold on. No problem. We have item 13. It is only being held for a comment, so it's not being totally polled. I believe that is correct. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to commend staff on the Discover, and I want to say that the Discover gets more comments from residents, I think, than anything PR-wise the city does. It's a tremendous educational tool that we use to keep our residents informed of things that are going on. I would never support eliminating it or even considering it. I'm sad we can't do it 12 months out of the year, but the fact that staff has gotten funding now to cover the costs, I think, is commendable. And I just want to commend our staff, Ms. Williams and all of her staff that put that document together. So anyway, with that, I support that.
And the one comment I would make on the Discover is that some people want to put opinions in there or how council voted, which is forbidden by law. We're allowed to list who the council is. There can be no photos of a council member otherwise in the Discover, and you can't say it was a 3-2 vote or whatever unless the different people voted for and against. That's against the law. It's strictly informational, and some people don't like it because it has to be somewhat plain Jane on things happening in the city. You can't actually do it. It's not a paper. We don't have those same type of rights because it's being paid for by the taxpayers. So I just want to make sure there is a distinct clarification why you will not see our photos in that. And that's why a number of governmental agencies take out those ads in the Tribune, where you see like the sanitation district, and they list people's photos. That's not considered direct mail. It doesn't go door to door. So you can actually show politicians' photos in those ads and have the taxpayers pay. We've never chosen to do those types of ads. We have a motion.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Drop down to item number 19, city manager's office reaffirming the city's commitment to the Brown Act. This is what we brought up earlier, that will cost the taxpayers $21,000 a year that will not be reimbursed by the state of California because they want us to be non-transparent.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Passes 5-0. Appointment of the community and senior service commissioner. I would like that held over because I want to get all the other names included. I know we have some updates, but I want to get the names included of the members who were not reappointed to be included.
Hold over.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Hold on one second, please. I don't have my agenda for the redevelopment.
Successor agency.
The successor agency. I have to do a separate thing for it by law. Thank you. Not great. There's one item. Sorry. Recess the city council meeting at 8:35 to convene the successor agency. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Chairman Tui.
Here.
Vice Chairman Sanderson.
Here.
Board Member Herford.
Here.
Board Member Satello.
Here.
Board Member Sykes.
Here.
We have only the consent calendar. Well, do we have, we have to open it up for a public comment, I believe, as a new law?
Yes, I don't believe there's any cards that have been turned in.
Is anyone wishing to speak on the successor agency? Hearing then, we'll close the successor agency.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to point out, we do have a new ROPS. It's been distributed to the council with some changes.
That's part of the motion. If you approve the consent, is to approve the new ROPS.
Do we have a motion to approve the new ROPS in the legal council, the new legal?
So moved.
Correct? Okay, no problem. Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Councilmember or board member Sykes, whatever the correct term would be at this time.
The items regarding the Sharps.
That we're not on yet.
That's in the back of the agenda. We're still coming to it, sir.
We're still in the successor agency. We're just agendizing.
We're on page six. We're going to you right now. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn to the council, adjourn our successor agency meeting to our, reconvene our council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a move in second. Okay, we have a move in second to adjourn our successor agency meeting at 8:37 and to reconvene our city council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Do we have any mayor or council members' reports? Seeing none, do we have any AB 1234 conference and meeting reports for a council member to submit? Seeing none, city council requests for report studies and investigation. Councilmember Fred Sykes, item number 21, is to request from Councilmember Frederick Sykes, request into the city council to instruct city staff to prepare a report on the steps to introduce state legislation mandating pharmaceutical companies and retail establishments that sell needles to fund and provide needle recycling programs. Councilmember Sykes.
Thank you, Mayor Tui. I would just like to say on this item, there are a number of people in our community that do use these sharp items, needles in particular, and they had asked if there was a way we could broaden this and make it more efficient, the recycling portion of it, and that when they go to purchase, when they go to purchase these items, it would be convenient for the person and companies who sell these items, such as Target and pharmaceutical locations, to have a drop-off for the used needles. And I had hoped that there was legislation already being drafted, but however, our research did not come up with any of the legislators that have brought this forth. I didn't see anyone speaking on this during the public address time, but I do know that there is a person that's present today that suffers this situation. And I do commend our city for what we do and what we have already in the way of a recycling setup in our city yard. So it's not that we're totally remiss. We are doing what we can. But all I'm saying is, we can improve with a little thought, but we can improve the process. For instance, just dealing with the electronic equipment, it was brought to my attention by Director Shanignazzi, that when you purchase an electronic item in Europe, they give you a way to recycle it automatically. So again, just saying, if we just put our minds to it, we can improve it and help these folks that are looking for a little bit more efficient way to recycle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question in reference. I don't know if anybody has this answer, but who normally mandates this? Would that be the state? That is the state. Okay. Chris is shaking his head yes. Okay, so I take that as a yes. I do think that it's always good to try and provide help for our citizens, and this is a "Mother May" item. May I suggest that we possibly could get in touch with our state legislators to see if they'd be willing to go in this? Because I don't know if this is within our purview. I think that that's just my concern. So with that, I don't know if, Chris, if you have anything to respond to, how we could accomplish that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sanderson. Sure, as you stated, this is a council member request for a further study, so the follow-up report would be a little bit expansion of the steps necessary, should the council wish to move forward to reach out to our local assemblyman, our local state senator, to see about doing legislation on a global platform where it would be statewide that we mandate or that they would pass the state to mandate a program where all the pharmaceutical companies and retail stores, for example, Rite Aid's or Walmarts or Walgreens, or anybody else that sells the needles, Targets, because they do have pharmacies, all those establishments have a recycling program or something like that. So it would be some sort of a program that would be mandated to them.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
We have a motion and a second. And the one comment I would make on this, I still do get concerned anytime we do all these things. I know you pay it when you buy a computer, you pay it when you buy tires. It's somewhat type of taxation-type situations. I am a diabetic. I have to get that and dispose of my needles appropriately, but we have a system to do that. And this to think out there that it's going to be done for free is really not true. You're living in a dream world. Someone will pay, so you'll just pay more for your needles. The pharmaceutical companies, they pass on all the cost down to you, nothing's in it. It's just like the soda tax that was being talked about in a number of other cities. They were shocked to find out that a two-liter will have a 68% increase on it because it's 67.6 ounces, so it's 68 cents extra for a two-liter. Some people may think it's free, but it's not. It comes at a cost, and I couldn't support this. I do believe we have situations, how I dispose of it, and we use the city yard like that. So I believe, that's why I would have Fred, and you still have the total use of your position in your office to write a letter to either one of our two representatives at those state level and ask for them to sponsor. We can't create a bill anyway, so it has to take one of them sponsoring it. So I think that's the best way. I would not support, and I would do this as a receive and file, and send you on your way if you want to do it as your own personal mission. I can support that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to receive and file. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Item number 22, request from Frederick Sykes to request the city council to instruct city staff to prepare a report reviewing types of contract provisions contained in city service agreements. Mr. Councilmember Sykes.
Once again, thank you, Mayor Tui. I think that Citizen Forrest Wilkins stated and made it abundantly clear that common sense, common knowledge lets us know when you read the articles about how some of our contracts have been set up, that there are some problems when it comes to the, in particular, to the resident's side and what we have to bear. And I want to say that, again, it's about fairness. It's not just trying to attack one company and single that out because we do have other contracts with the Evergreen clause that's attached. And more importantly, I'm more concerned, as the way I tried to get this worded, is that in addition to the Evergreen, that's not the only worded in the contracts that puts a trap on us. And some has to do with the window of opportunity as to when you can even question the contract. And there are other things that I feel are a little unfair, even when it comes to our property rights, especially with when you can shop around, for instance, with a rollaway. If you're doing a large project at your home and say something that your 90-pound trashcan can't hold, such as all the tiles on your roof. If you shop around and you find a competitive company, such as Waste Management, there's Valley Vista, Consolidated, there are a number of other companies that do offer trash service. And if you look at the wording and what it means to have exclusive contract, it means that if you shop around and you find where there's a lower cost than what Athens provides, and you bring this equipment to your property, you have violated some of the codes in West Covina. And so therefore, even when you have things that you're doing on your own property, this contract has now diminished some of our property rights. That's how serious these contracts are. And that's why I was hoping to start just by simply getting information, and that's what I'm asking for, is a report that examines these contracts. Because I, as a city council member, and as a layperson before I became a council member, I could see that this contract seemed to be a little skewed and not fair for the residents, not as fair as it could be. And so you will see that if we can get a study, there are a number of clauses that add up to be a contract trap. Once you're snared, you have a hard time getting out. And that's why I'm asking for us to, as a council, so that when we start reading these in the future, those who are sitting here can look for those traps and make sure we do our best to protect and serve the residents who put us here. And that's all I'm asking for in this report, is just to have a ferreting out of these provisions that if you're not careful, they snare you and trap you, and you're stuck. Thank you, Mayor.
Fred, where I always sometimes end up in the situation where I respectfully disagree because you act as if there's no question Waste Management can provide, in a exclusive city, a lower cost for a roll-off, where Waste Management is the exclusive hauler. That is not the case. They, all the trash companies have the exact same provisions. When I built the house in the city of Baldwin Park, they guesstimate how much disposal I will do, and I have to buy roll-offs to that level. Now, that's Waste Management. So you can go, and it's just not one company. That's just how they do it, and it's a similar rate. Before you can get your home signed off, your building permit final, you must take in all your receipts and get a clearance from Waste Management that you have put out the proper amount or done what they deem as a reasonable amount of disposal, that you can't take it out yourself. Now, I know it sounds good when you hear that, that's individuals' rights there, and I normally would support that. The difference in this particular case, if you take trash to the landfill on your own, the city of West Covina is liable for it. The taxpayers overall are liable for any individual home that takes trash and it's not properly gone through and recycled. We get points against us for our diversion credit. Athens has to guarantee that we meet a certain level of diversion credit as required by law, or they pay the fine. If you're going to have someone else disposing of the trash, and there's someone that's picking up not exclusively, which we currently, at this time, have 20,000 tons, one-fifth of all of our waste stream that's dumped at the local landfill, is renegade trash. That is not dumped by our hauler. That goes against meeting our state-required AV 939 goal, so it's easy to say, I don't think people fully understand what, how it's done in all cities, regardless of the city. Forrest Wilkins always comments on Rosemeat. Just so you understand, Rosemeat took not the lowest bid, but the third, the highest bid that was submitted. That's who they took, a company that already had had the contract for 33 years. And I'm not saying nothing bad about the company, but that's just a matter of fact. To keep their, and this is where you have problems comparing one city to the next, to keep their residential rates more affordable, they're increasing their commercial rates 41.9%. Well, no one talks about that when they make their comments. Every city is different. We get a franchise fee, 1.4 million a year, comes from the trash company, which is added on to your bill. Their trash fee they charge is not truly what it's on the bill because, again, 10% of the money goes to us. They're just the collector of it, no different with Southern California Edison, the gas company. We collect approximately $2, $2.5 million in franchise fees to use our public right of way. And it comes from the rate payers, you guys always. So I'm saying, Fred, I understand it's easy to say you should be able to pick and choose, but then who's going to be liable when we don't meet our diversion goal? A brand-new law that this one, in fact, and like I said, you were at the meeting, AV, I believe, 341 requires now apartments and commercial businesses, that they have to sort, separate their trash at their individual business. Okay? Athens cities were excluded from it because they Murph all their trash, so all your trash is dug through, so you don't have to comply to that one standard. And there's many things similar to that. There's also new recycling of carpeting rules. You're not supposed to throw away your carpet. It's supposed to be recycled, just like the batteries, just like the computers. They grind that up instead of taking landfill space. Come July 1st, I believe, of 2013, and you may know the exact date, Shannon, there is a current bill pending before the state of California, and either way, Plenty Hills is closing down, we will no longer get diversion credit for our green waste. We have a 68% approximate diversion rate. 40% of it is grass, the green barrel in front of your home. Most cities don't have a place to take that to continue getting your credit in the future. If you're in Athens city, they've already purchased a green facility, a green waste facility, in the city of Victorville, where they can take your green waste, turn it into mulch, and you will get 100% credit for it like you have in the past. That's how we meet and make our diversion goal. And not all cities have it. All the cities, all the trash haulers will tell you they can get cheaper roll-offs in your city, except when you phone them for the city they represent exclusively. It's virtually the same price. All the haulers charge similar prices when it comes to the roll-offs, but when they're going in a city, like I said, they don't have in their contract, that's when it comes up. We do offer a different level of service, Fred. I understand whether you dislike it or like it. There are other contract provisions in there, and it's kind of hard to say in a contract when you agree to something, that you want to change those provisions, it's hard for people in general. If they had to buy a CNG trash truck at $485,000 and you need 10 of them, that at some point in time, their Murph, it was a $60 million investment, those you just can't recover over a year time. This doesn't capitalize that way. That's why your homes are capitalized normally on a 30-year loan, but your cars are not. How come you don't capitalize your home on the same length of term as your car? There's a reason why you don't have a five-year loan on your home. You wouldn't live in it. You couldn't afford it. So based on the amount of investment, you have longer-term contracts so you can spread, just like you do in your own personal lives. Credit card interest is different in terms. If you buy a TV on payments, it's all different types of terms because of the capitalization of the individual item. Mayor Protem Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple clarifications because in reading the report that was presented in reference to the request, we call these "Mother May" items, it just states that to instruct city staff to prepare a report reviewing types of contract provisions contained in city service agreements. Okay, so I understood this, that, because the word that Councilmember Sykes was using was, these provisions examine these contracts, but then the topic Athens comes up. So I guess I'm confused here a little bit because we have hundreds of contracts. And in the years I've been on council, in reference to Athens in particular, I believe probably six times or so, it's come in front of us where we've had to make decisions, adjustments, et cetera. We have, each contract that comes in front of each council, maybe this council, maybe the next council, makes those decisions at public hearings. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, at this point, I would just ask to receive and file because, to me, the better move would be is to, for Mr. Sykes, to meet with the staff to maybe understand the complexity of each contract. But if we're just talking about one particular contract and how that service agreement works, I think the city attorney briefed on that earlier. So I guess what I'm looking for is city service agreements. I mean, we have hundreds of city service agreements, so I guess I'm just looking for what exactly your, I mean, if I was a staff member, I'd be going, what, what do we, what's our staff report? So at this point, I wouldn't support it, but if you can bring some clarity to that, I would appreciate it.
Does anyone else have questions that haven't asked questions? If not, we'll go back to Councilmember Sykes. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Tui. It's simple. It's simple. Competitive bidding. All the minutia, we still have put ourselves in, at their mercy, and it's monopoly. We have allowed that to happen. And so therefore, when it comes to West Covina, Athens no longer has to be competitive. So it still boils down to everything that's been brought out as far as laws and et cetera. The bottom line is, if we don't get competitive bid, we won't know what the other companies can do. So people who have an allegiance to Athens can chow all day, but it still boils down to the fact that we won't hear from other companies until we do something about the evergreen situation in the trash contract. So all the studying and everything else still boils down to what's going to be best for the residents. And right now, all we have is folks that obviously have an allegiance to a company, and is, appears to be, for lack of a better word, a symbiotic relationship. And it's too bad that relationship doesn't, when it comes to the symbiotic and symbiosis, doesn't lean towards the residents as much as it does to Athens. So again, competitive bid is the key word, and it's unfortunate that we can't at least start walking this back so it can be done. And then maybe you might be proven to be right, that Athens may be the best game in town. But right now, when you look at the bill, and you call around town, just like they did for the, it's no different than with the TV program. It just doesn't add up. When you do your research, it just doesn't add up. I'm sorry. So, staff, thank you.
Councilmember Satello.
Thank you. So this whole thing has come up because you wanted to look at Athens' contract. Everybody's talking about Athens' contract. I'm the new guy in the block, okay? I hope to get to talk to Andy about it. I was going to get with him. We've been busy with the budget and different things. We've been pretty busy since I got on council. I've been running. What I have no problem, and I have no problem asking, Fred, and I can't see why you can't ask, why can't we review the contract? If you have something wrong with the contract, or if you're saying we're doing something wrong with the contract, or there's something wrong with the contract, why can't we review it and look at it then?
I think the question he is asking, he's asking for them to review it and have the taxpayers pay to have it reviewed and him not review it. That's what I, how much staff time? We have more than 100 contracts, for clarification. We have way more.
I realize, but I'm saying is, but I mean, I'm sure staff could present us with the contract, we can go over the contract, we could read, look at the contract and compare to what it has, and compare to what it is to, we could call the cities ourselves. I myself would like to do that. I realize you have a lot of things to do. I realize you have a lot of things, and your staff does do a lot of things. You just came with a great balanced budget for us. But I myself, I would like to see, I can't see what's wrong with it. I can't, I mean, everything came in front of the council, everything was approved in front of the council, and I think it's been transparent. I can't see we're hiding anything. I'm right now, I'm just kind of at awe about what's going on right now. So.
Councilmember Sykes, then Mayor Protem Sanderson.
I'll use the Sanderson first.
Oh.
Please.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr.
I thought you put up your finger first.
The ladies first.
Oh, thank you very much. I would advise that a meeting with staff to go over the contract, I'd be interested in going to that meeting. I know we recently did one on the Big League Dreams, and it was actually really exciting to go over the aspects of such a complex project, and maybe that would be a benefit to do something like that. Or maybe if Mr. Satello and Mr. Sykes want to meet with the staff, I mean, that would be a wonderful suggestion. Secondly, I just, with all due respect, I don't want to be disrespectful to anybody, but I don't, I felt the comments about allegiance to Athens was unprofessional. My allegiance is to the community of West Covina and to the people, and I try very hard. I live here too, I pay trash too, and I definitely have looked at these contracts in the past. We've had hours and hours and, you know, meetings in the past. And so some of us do have a little bit of history on the ins and outs and the complexity of the project, and I would never want to disrespect anybody for wanting that need. And that's why I wanted to get clarity, because this was saying all types of provisions in contracts. So Mr. Sykes is looking for Athens in particular, which I think narrows it down for staff to go over that. And that's maybe where I was kind of questioning. So if that is something that would be amenable to you, I think that would be very beneficial.
Councilmember Sykes.
Thank you, Mayor Tui. What I'm hoping to get this council to see is that it's in our hands to make a difference. And we need to do it from a position of information. We need to know what we're looking at. And that's why I said, staff, if they can put together this information on these contract traps, and I'm particularly concerned about all of the contracts that have evergreen in them. It's not just one. Every contract that has evergreen in it, I think is suspect, because it leans towards forever for that company. And again, the bottom line is, the council can make a difference. And as far as my speaking about allegiance, and all I can tell folks, please, just go look at the 460 forms. That gives you a lot of information. And it explains why folks might necessarily not see what I see, in the way of the unfairness of power, money, it has its influence. And Athens is very powerful. And then hopefully, we can get Athens to use that power for being fair. I've asked the representative before, when we had a meeting about this, just be fair. That's all we asking. And that's what the open bid process. And I got nothing wrong with the service that comes to my home. The truck drivers are fantastic. I mean, they go the extra mile, I've seen them. So it's not just about saying that Athens is a poor quality company. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, when it comes to our pocketbook, I think the contract is too skewed towards the company in this case. And so that's all I'm saying as far as, I want all evergreen contracts to be walked back. It's not just picking on Athens. I just don't want us to be stuck with something forever when I see other cities having open bid, and the only difference is the five people that are sitting up here. We can't agree to walk it back. That's the only difference. That's what I'm trying to say to my fellow councilmembers, in particular, Councilmember Sanderson, to answer your question. It's just about being fair. Thank you.
Fred, again, with all due respect, you said when we spoke about you that we're lowering the level of decorum, basically, but, you know, and this is the problem I have with you, but when you speak about us, all areas are open. When we talked about your 460s, that's highly inappropriate, and you told the audience how unfair that is, and see how he's lowering the decorum. And then you went ahead and did your zingers, and apparently, that's okay to say there's something dirty, is what you tried to imply, but it's amazing, you just have a double standard, and I think that's part of the problem I'm saying. And a lot of the different stuff that was put on the recall site talks about stuff that wasn't the truth. You told me with Rob Satello present and Mike shot at the opening of the splash pad, that why did you approve those condominiums on Nanette and Nikki Court? And he seems to have a lot of personal vendetta, some reason against me. I tried to explain to him, I was eight years old when those townhomes were approved. And he did say that, there was three people present, in fact, four, Glenn Kennedy was there also. And then he said, why did you build all those condominiums over by New Galas High School? Again, I was 12. I have no idea why he dislikes them. I told him I would prefer not to have the sales and have larger yards, okay? Instead of like those condominiums that he's referring to, or he said, like, you let Richard Melendez live in that home. And that Richard lives in a 900-square-foot house, and because of the way the thing's set up. And I said, again, I would have preferred to have larger lots and not have the pasais and have the additional property in the people's backyards. Then he said, well, then people like me couldn't afford to live there. See, I'm screwed either way. If I go ahead and tell him that I would prefer the, those pasais have caused problems, and again, they're nice to walk, you think in concept, they look great, and they do look nice, but people have the ability to break into a home, jump over the pasail, and our cops can't catch them. They can jump dart your five blocks away in a second. There's something to be said sometimes when people have their yard in their backyard and they're doing the entertaining in their backyard, and not in those common areas like that. But that's why those homes were allowed to be built in 1970, again, I think I was a fourth grader. But he said it was my fault, and that's what goes through his mindset, and he's going to try to say he didn't say that, but again, four people were present when I was being scolded for building stuff when I wasn't around, not even in West Covina. Councilwoman Sanderson, then Councilmember Sykes, or Mayor Protem Sanderson.
I was going to just make a motion that we receive and file.
Second.
May we have a move in a second? Councilmember Sykes, this is your last time, because you're basically calling for the...
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Simply the, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. When I mentioned the 460 forms, when I talked about myself, I mentioned my 460 forms. And when I said about allegiances and anything else that you need to find out, a lot of that can be done right at the clerk's office, because they reveal where you get your campaign money from. That's what the 460 form is about. And the 700 form is the other way that you make a living. So folks, this characterization about I'm victimizing somebody, I'm sorry, I don't agree. 460 forms, everybody up here who runs for office, the 460 forms are there. And it's there for you to peruse and understand the situation. And then speak, decide for yourself what you see there. So you do it for me, do it for all of us. That's what I encourage you to do, and that's what I mean by being involved. You don't just listen to me talk. You also go and verify. I'm going to repeat that. You don't just listen to Fred Sykes say something up here. I want you to go and verify what I say. And if you got my mailer from my last campaign, I gave you information as to where you could go and verify what I said, and I'm doing it tonight. The 460 form will help you verify what I'm saying tonight. Thank you.
We'll end on you, Councilmember Hurford.
You know, this is like an election campaign in a council meeting, and, you know, the sad reality of this is, Fred, that I don't think maybe one or two of us was on the council when this contract was approved for Athens years ago. And, you know, we debate these things, I know Roger brought this up numerous times, we debate this contract over and over again, and nobody really understands it. When we approved this contract, you probably don't understand that the commercial rates subsidize the residential rates. I mean, there's things that are in this contract. We debated the cost of every can, the color of the can, how many cans you had, how much extra you had to pay for an extra can. I mean, that's all stuff that was done by a previous council. When you say I have a symbiotic relationship with the trash company, it's no different than the relationship I have with our police department or our fire department. My bottom line is I'm providing services to the residents of West Covina. If I heard from a numerous amount of residents in West Covina, they didn't like the trash service, or they thought it was way too expensive, I would take a look at it. But I can honestly say, in the last five years, I don't even know if I've had one complaint against Athens. Maybe, maybe one. And I can tell you, when I turn that complaint into the city manager's office, Athens is out there talking to that resident, just like I know they've done it to you. So the service that they provide is not an issue. The cost, let me tell you, when we closed the BKK landfill, we were told on this council the trash rates were going to go to $45. They're not, and they were going to go higher. Athens was one of the cutting-edge companies to come in with a material recovery facility, would take our trash from our cans and sort the trash with the recyclables, because AB, or an assembly bill was passed that said we had to recycle, I believe, 60 or 50% of our waste, and they guaranteed that. And that was one of the provisions of approving the contract, was that they would do the recycling for us, instead of the city having to monitor it and, you know, make sure we were recycling all the right amounts and everything. They were cutting-edge. And they're still cutting-edge, because they've developed another facility out in Victorville now that'll take the green waste once the landfill fills up. So there's so many things you don't know. And you need to, with all due respect, you're new to the council, you need to read the contract, you need to sit down with Athens and learn about what they do do. And if you have constituents, and you probably do, that don't like the contract, that's fine. We discussed it in the election, we discussed it during the recall. You didn't win. So you either move on, or we debate these things over and over. So my seat on the council, we've done this numerous times, I don't need another study on it, until I hear a loud outcry from the residents of West Covina, I think the contract's a good contract. So I'm ready to vote.
Okay, we have a motion, did someone second it? I can't remember.
I seconded.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file, correct? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, city council comments. I think we've already done them.
No, I want to make some comments.
Councilmember Hurford.
You know, we live in a different era. If you haven't noticed, the state of California and the federal government are all screwed up. The popularity of our Congress and of our assemblies and our senators in the state of California are abysmal. And what do they continue to do but pound, pound, pound on city government? And this body here sits before you every two weeks, and we make decisions that are a lot of times affected by the state's decisions, and I can tell you, they're no friend. Our city manager and our police chief wrote an editorial a couple of weeks ago in the Tribune that was spot-on. We will not have cities if the state continues to do what they do. As voters, and I'm not talking to people in this room necessarily, I'm talking to people on the TV, and I hope you can hear me and I hope you can see me, you need to stand up. You need to elect different people. This is, this is just embarrassing, what state of California has come to. On the national level, I mean, you see what's going on, and it's like we do here, it's a political, you know, debate that goes nowhere. It's all spins and soundbites, and that's what this has come to, our country's come to, and it's sad. So dang it, I've been in government for 22 years, I won't go any higher, because I won't cave into the party politics. I did that in 2000, I ran for state office. They wanted me to do all the stuff that the Democrats wanted me to do, and I wouldn't do it. And so that's why you don't get good people to move on, because everybody that moves on, you got to do what the assembly speaker says to do, you know, or you got to do what the senate leader says to do. And I'm telling you on this ballot coming up, from my seat on the council, I ain't voting for any new taxes. And I hope you do too, out there, every one of you that listens to this. And I'll do everything I can to tell everybody not to vote for new taxes, because, you know what? They're just going to blow it. And then they're going to come back to the city and they're going to take more of our money. And I keep waiting for the day that our policemen and our firemen at the local level speak up to their state representatives and their state union and say, you're killing us, because you're taking away what is the good part of our city. You keep chipping away at our city fire department and our city police department to where, what do we do? Either raise taxes or we go county. And neither one of those is a palatable decision, but it's, I'm at the point where if I don't say something, I'm going to explode, because I'm just tired of city government being the stomping and whipping boy and everything for the state of California. stomping and whipping boy and everything for the state of California. All the leaders up there, they need to, to wake up, and I know they're not gonna, and I don't think this will do much good, but I just think, people, I'm going to tell everybody I know, you got to get rid of these guys, or they got to turn around. So that's my comment for tonight.
Hey, do we have any other councilmember comments? Mayor Protem Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not that I don't, I completely one-hundred percent agree with Councilmember Hurford. I actually wanted to find out from staff if we have any other grants available. I know we have done the dog park up at Del Norte, and I've gotten a lot of emails and happiness about that. And I know at one point, we were discussing one on the south end of town, and I don't know if that's something you would just bring back to me, maybe not at a, at a council level, but if there's any grant monies or anything to maybe do a second dog park, I would appreciate that. That's it.
Okay, we're going to drop down to adjournments, and I, I don't know if anyone else has one. I know Mayor Protem Sanderson has one. Hold on.
I believe, did you still want to try to address that issue? We'll do it next time. Okay, yes, sir.
Okay. We drop down to adjournments. Once again, Mayor Protem Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Lillian Hill's Community Services Commissioner Nick Lewis's grandmother. She was ninety years old. She was a sixty-three-year resident of the city of West Covina and bought her house on Barbara Avenue as part of the new tract in nineteen forty-nine. She went to Covina High School, one of only, the only high school in the area. All of her three sons, including Nick's father, were born in Covina and raised in West Covina. Two of the three went to West Covina High, the other to the Bishop and Mont. She is survived by her husband, Nick's grandfather, Robert, who is ninety-two years old. Her three sons, Tom, Don, and Jeff, four grandchildren, including Nick, and five, soon-to-be-six, great-grandchildren. These type of things, I just, I'm in tears. I love this family. They're an amazing family. And hug your family. Let them know you appreciate them, why they are here. And my thoughts and prayers go out to the Lewis family and in missing, you know, somebody that was so very important in their lives. Thank you.
Also, to add on to the adjournment tonight, we're adjourning this meeting in memory of Randy Pearman, son of our West Covina Police Lieutenant Jerry Pearman, who got the tragic news that his son had died up in, I believe, Azusa Canyon. Linda Carrico, mother of our elected city clerk Lori Carrico, and our former planning commissioner Alan Carrico, who also passed. Lorenzo Mercado, son of longtime West Covina residents Ophelia and Roman Mercado, and that's why I was hoping that the graffiti issue could have been having some issues in the last four days with this last comment, because Glenn Kennedy's ex-wife, who did live at the home and mother of his children, died in her sleep four days ago. And if we can adjourn the meeting in memory of Adrian Herrera, and that is the ex-wife of community and senior commissioner Glenn Kennedy, who happens to be our graffiti contractor. So I know Glenn's been snowed under for the last five days, four days of dealing with that, so. Our thoughts and prayers go out to each of these families at this difficult time, and if we can send our condolences to them all. I have a motion and a second.
Do you want to move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at nine-